We now call this meeting to order. If you could please rise if you are able and pay attention to Councilman Lesser for the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Could bow your head, please. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as a governing body to watch over the business of the city. We ask for you to please give us guidance. We ask this in your name. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now proceed with the roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Jensen?
Present.
Dobler?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Lesser?
Here.
There are no appointments this evening, so we proceed to the presentations. The first presentation being a winter operations update. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we'll have Dr. Peak, our Public Works Director, run through our winter operations plans. We had a beautiful day today, but we know it will not last forever.
Good evening, governing body. A pleasure to be here tonight and talk about snow and ice when we don't have snow and ice, so that's always a good thing. We do this annually just to remind the governing body about what our practice is with snow and ice removal. Last year, we had 10 separate events in Topeka that required a response that resulted in us expending about $550,000 in materials and contract labor. Of course, with the 2020 budget, you authorized putting that money in the general fund, whereas in the past, it came out of sales tax. But roughly, snow events cost us, on average, about $55,000 per event on that materials side. We've talked to you in the past about what our policy was, and I just want to highlight the change that we made last year, so everybody's on the same page. We still have what are called priority routes, secondary and primary routes, and that's kind of our order for attacking snow and ice removal. But we've done away with kind of the accumulation total. In the past, we would talk about, did we have four inches of accumulation before we got out there and start plowing, and it was six inches and greater before we went into residential areas. And the change we made last year was what we call a more dynamic or event-specific approach. So we're still focusing on those priority routes as emergency, primary, and secondary routes. That's what we're going to do if we're starting to see snow or ice accumulations. And then, we're going to look at extended weather forecast, accumulation totals, if we've got more weather, and we're going to talk with the city manager, is it warranted for us to go in and attack the local streets? So just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, that we don't have a plan that says we're going to respond to local streets all the time, but we may if the conditions warrant that. The other thing that our street operations team started last year was using contract labor to actually supplement some of the plowing and hauling, basically to augment our response, so we're going to continue to do that as needed. We've also talked about bringing other staff within the city onboard to help us do that. I just want to kind of walk you through what we do during an event, and there's a lot that goes up to before we even get into the event. And we've got a number of our street operations folks here tonight, Jackie Vogel, Tony Trower, and Alan, our safety coordinator. They've done a lot of work this past year in looking at how we do things and asking questions, can we do it better? And so I'm going to cover some of that as we go through the presentation, but kudos to them and the work they've done to help us be better prepared this year, and I think be more productive and efficient in how we respond. Any event we're looking, we're preparing and planning, that's collaborating with TMTA, collaborating with 501, our school districts, collaborating with the county. We've already had conversations with them this year about how we respond. We're talking with our staff if we need to make shift adjustments for going to a 24-hour operation, so that they can make arrangements. And we're really looking at, what is that weather event coming in? Is it going to be just dry snow? Is it going to rain first, turn to sleep? All those things, basically then determine how we respond. And that can include, prior to the precipitation, us doing a process that's called anti-icing. I'll cover a little bit of that. Once we actually have precipitation, if we have accumulation, it could be plowing. If we've got ice, it could be de-icing. And then, within the downtown CBD, you saw a lot of this last year, where we actually have to windrose snow, we get the blowers out, we have to fill up trucks and haul it off. So there's actually a removal process in our more urban areas. And then, lastly, how long we continue that level of effort is, we're looking at that extended forecast. I mean, you can see here, we've got 60-degree days, and tomorrow, we're going to get into cooler temps. So if we've got warmer weather coming that's going to help that de-icing or melting that off, we may ramp back that process, and people will be saying, hey, you haven't gotten out there yet. Well, the sun could probably get to you before we get out there. So we're just trying to be good stewards of the resources you've given us. One of the things that I do want to talk about, that this map, it's a little different than what you've seen in the past. It's still showing, basically, the priority, the emergency routes, the priority routes, and the secondary routes. So the priority, or I'm sorry, the emergency routes are on red, and those are our major roadways that kind of connect our emergency services, allowing people, police and fire to be able to respond. And then, as we kind of go back down to the blue on the map is the remaining primary arterials, and then the green represents our secondary or collector route. So some of these might be neighborhood collectors that serve a larger subdivision or provide connecting links between our residential areas. And that's the order of priority we work through. And I just want everybody to know, that reflects about 50% of the pavement in the city, those priority routes. So the remaining balance is those local streets. Well, this past year, our operations folks kind of asked the question, we had, on the backend, we have what are called zones, and we assign equipment and resources to those zones. And we realized that in excess of at least 10, 15 years, no one had asked the question of, do we have the right balance of volume of streets to the equipment that we can assign? And we have 14 dump trucks, those are the big workhorses that you see out there. We've got roughly 12 zones, so do we have that right balance? That's going to dictate our response time, as well as our material storage. We have three locations where we have our salt brine or our sand urea mixtures that folks have to go and pick up and bring out. And so, we went through a process of rebalancing the zones this year. And so that allows us to be more productive within those zones. We also spent a lot of time talking about technique, working from the inside lanes out on our arterials to kind of maximize our efficiency. And then, the next piece, excuse me, I don't want to talk about is our equipment, because all this planning is great, but you know, last year, we had roughly 85% of those dump trucks experienced downtime during those events. And so unlike fire or police, we don't have a dedicated replacement fund for street operating equipment. So just like fire and police, if we don't have good equipment, we can't provide an adequate response. In addition to that 85%, 43% of those trucks were out of service for 20% of the time those events were going on. So we've got an aging, decrepit fleet. Good news is, is we were able to cobble some money together, and you'll be talking about that as part of a budget amendment later in the program, but we've purchased four new dump trucks, basically to replace some of those more worn-out pieces of equipment. So these are, is a picture of those new trucks that are coming in, so they'll be outfitted with the gear and our logo, all our operational equipment. These are tandem dump trucks, and they've really thought a lot about, how can we get more effort out of these trucks that we have? And so these trucks, that I showed you in the last picture, don't have the plows on them, but this is a picture of what will happen when they do. These trucks have the capability of a wing plow, as well as a 12-foot-wide plow on the front. So you're basically almost getting the power of two trucks plowing with one truck. So they're about $183,000 apiece, this truck. We got them off a state bid contract. But that allows us to be more effective with one piece of equipment as we move down the road. The other piece that I think's important to point out to you, these trucks, is basically the spreaders. This is the outfit that you put on the bed of the truck. So outside of snow season, we use these trucks for repairing potholes, hauling material, everything. During the winter, we have spreaders on the back, and you'll notice on the side of each spreader is kind of a white plastic tank. That is, pre-wets the material, so that allows us to use less de-icing material, because it's wet before it hits the surface, so it sticks and starts working. The bottom of the spreader box, we actually have a distributor that will allow it to broadcast not only the lane it's traveling in, but the adjacent lanes, so we can kind of cover more lane width with these spreaders, as well as kind of regulate what lanes it's carrying. So with this investment in equipment, we can be more productive out on the streets. The other piece of equipment that we purchased this year is a new anti-icing tank, so this carries our brine mixture that we apply prior to event. A lot of times, you see those lines that are on bridges. We apply those to bridges, as well as hotspot locations or hills and curves, and this helps prevent ice from forming. Our current, basically, de-icered truck is a manual operation. So our operators today have to get out of the truck, turn it on, make their maneuver, park, get back out of the truck, turn it off as that material's going onto the pavement. It's not set up with auto controls. So now, we have the ability to have all that control in the cab, which will make us more efficient and be able to get to routes around town. So as we invest in this equipment, we'll continue to be more responsive and more productive in our snow removal. And then, you know, the last picture that I just want to leave you with is, you know, we did this gang plowing, basically having four trucks work in tandem to plow some of these larger arterials. With those new wing plows, you can basically take one truck out of the mix. So you can see us that we're using three trucks, and we can allocate that other truck to other locations. And with that, I'd stand for any questions that you have.
Any questions for Dr. Peak? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for a great report. It is good to have a briefing, especially when you've changed what you're doing, and that makes sense, but at least we'll all just be able to defer to you instead of having to try to remember what the trigger points were. You mentioned, for years, people, citizens have been saying, why don't you use contracted labor? And you mentioned that you did that last year. How did that work out?
I think we had good success. We used them on some of the lesser routes and to kind of supplement that downtime with equipment. You know, we had a good contractor working for us, so like I said, we're going to continue doing that this year.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jason, I know earlier, I think we dodged a bullet. It was supposed to be a bad storm coming through, and we missed it. Do you watch for that and kind of keep people on standby? How do you handle that?
Sure. So, you know, we get extended forecasts, you know, two weeks out, looking at what that's going to be. And then, as we get closer to the event, we're talking with meteorologists about what the forecast of pavement temperatures are versus accumulation, and communicating that internally with staff. They know the drill. I mean, when we get to winter season, that sometimes it's all hands on deck until we get it done.
Okay. Because I know people ask me, are they watching? Are they watching? Because they're, you know, they're wondering, especially how they're going to get to work, you know?
Yes.
So, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Peak, thank you for the report, and thank you for all your efforts. This is, you know, so, there's like a million different ways to mess it up and only a couple ways to get it right, so I appreciate everything you guys do. I did have one question, one thing we ran to last year, you might recall that there were some areas where there were steep hills that, and it was a problem with buses. Have you done anything specifically to address that, or what do you think?
So we've tracked all those locations, and I guess what I didn't mention in our presentation is the hot, what we call, those are hotspot locations. We put those in that same priority mix, so as the big tandems are out there working, the main routes, our smaller pickup trucks, may be heading to those hotspot locations to address them, and that's just part of our operational plan. We have had communications with the school district. We've asked them to communicate directly with us. We know sometimes they like to communicate directly to council. That's fine, but you know, it works best if you just, you talk to our operations folks, and we've got those relationships in place.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilwoman Hiller?
One more, just for the public. Some years ago, you switched to a pretreatment program that was clear. People couldn't see it on the street, so they thought you hadn't done anything. Could you address a little bit what your pretreatment is and whether people will ever see that pretreatment or later, rocks and sand and things like that?
So the anti-icing that we do is limited to bridge locations and those hotspots. We do not do a, we don't have the capability to do a citywide, what I would call, pretreatment application.
Okay.
So the only place you will see the anti-icing is on those bridge and hotspots. That, basically, the tank piece, as I said, we have one of those, and we have the old manual. So we've got two resources. We can be a little more responsive, but we just don't have the resources to do it citywide. We do have the anti-icing, which is applied from the spreaders, and those are granular material. We're trying to apply the right amount necessary, given the temperatures and other things. So you may not see a wholesale sanding of areas that some people are used to seeing. It may be like a little sprinkle of salt, and it's just, it's going to vary, but you can check the website to see which areas we have plowed or treated. That has always been in place, and we encourage people to use that.
Thank you very much. That's helpful. Thank you.
Seeing no additional questions, Dr. Peak, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next presentation is the Utilities Quarterly Report. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Deputy Director Braxton Cockley of the Utilities Department will give you a quarterly update.
It's always fun to talk about the utilities. I love these quarterly reports. It gives us an opportunity to show off and show with you what we're doing.
Sure.
Okay, so, under construction, you have a couple of projects going on. We are boring a new water line under 24 Highway, right there at Tyler, so I think about where the Walmart and the Big Dillens are on the north side at Rochester. So we're boring the line through there. $150,000, 220 lineal feet to get across that massive KDOT rideaway. The purpose for this is, currently, we only have a dead-end feed going to those businesses, and they are very water-dependent. Think about the restaurants that they have in there. Last summer, we had a new business that went in, and they had to cut in a fire line. That's when we found out that the old line had broken under 24 Highway and had never been repaired. And one way was to go several thousand feet to tie in to get a loop system, or just go back in under 24 and allows us to tie into our distribution system to the south. So if we do have a break on that line, the old dead-end line they used to feed, now we can back-feed and keep those businesses in water. So pretty, I think, I appreciate the fact that staff looked at various options and came up with the one that was the most cost-effective for us. East filter. We are just getting started on the rehabilitation. We're doing one half of that at a time, so that we can still keep the other half in service, because we need our west plant and our east plant. And then, on the straight transmission mains, so this main goes from Seward and Straight south down to the Norwood Pump Station. This is the last of the five major 24-inch transmission main projects. We had east and west Seward, and we had east and west Crane, so this is the fifth, the last link on it. And this is cool stuff. So you see the trench box and the boring machine for the horizontal directional drilling on the left-hand side of the screen. This allowed us to bore underneath the railroad track. And then, on the right side, you see the two massive lengths of, this is fusible PVC. Each one of these is 450 feet long. So we'll set up a boring rig very similar to the one that you see on the left side, on the south side of the Shunga. It'll bore the 900 feet through, and then it'll start pulling back. And after it gets that first 450 feet in, then they'll go in and they'll fuse that last section of 450 feet, and then be able to pull that across. So definitely fun stuff. In design, chlorine disinfection basin relocation is probably one of the critical ones. You guys remember back in the first quarter of 2018, we had that violation of HAAAs. So we were one part per billion for one quarter in one location. So one part per billion, that's one teaspoon of water in an Olympic-sized swimming pool. By moving our disinfection basin, right now, we disinfected the head of our treatment train. And what we're going to be doing is moving that to the very end, right before the filters. That will give us an additional approximately 16 to 18 hours of settling time to allow more of those organics to settle out before we chlorinate. HAAAs are a disinfection byproduct, and it's a direct result of chlorine interacting with the organics. So reduce the amount of organics, you reduce the amount of HAAAs. We really, you know, when you're only one part per billion off, you don't need to see that much of a reduction, so excellent project. On the water line replacements, you'll see I've added a fourth project to this, and this is Ashworth Place. We've had approximately 20 breaks in this 1,400-foot run. This ranked at the highest level in our business risk exposure. You guys remember the Fracta model I showed you last week? Red is bad. This section is red in the business risk. Even though it doesn't have the highest number of breaks compared to these other ones, the business risk exposure is high, because when you think about what's affected there, you've got hotel and restaurants, and you also have a new car wash that's going in. A break there puts them out of business for the six to eight hours, or we're limping along until our guys can come in and do a break repair at night. So a very important project in design. I look for this one to be out on the street probably spring with a summer construction time period. Under construction, flurry of activity out at the Oakland Waste Starter Treatment Plant. We're finishing up the UV disinfection modifications, basically doubling the amount of our disinfection capability, and we're on the last basin for the mixer replacement. You guys remember about a year and a half ago, I talked to you about, we were in design on the solids handling and biogas project, and we've now completed the first half of that, which is the biogas, I'm sorry, that's the solids handling part. Bottom right-hand corner, you see the two centrifuges. So centrifuge, basically, you guys are aware of what a centrifuge is, because you use it on a weekly basis. You put your clothes in the wash machine, and it hits the spin cycle. It's spinning really rapidly, and it's throwing the water off on that. The centrifuge is the same thing. Bio solids go in, spins it rapidly, helps to de-water those. This replaced the old filter belt presses, old technology. We had a lot of repair costs with those. They could basically get us down to solids content 12 to 15%, usually closer to 12 to 13%. The centrifuges lets us get to solids content of 20%. So there's an inherent efficiency in this, because we're reducing the amount of our waste that we're actually hauling. You see on the left side, that's basically the loading bay. Bio solids dump into the dump trucks, so we can reduce our truck rolls by about 25%. The other huge efficiency that we're gaining on this is the reduction of overtime. These two centrifuges, either one could handle our waste load on a normal day. So if we have one of the centrifuges down, we can operate the other one, allow us for maintenance. Filter belt presses, we were always running overtime. They just weren't as efficient, so we had a lot of night, evening, and weekend overtime. So great efficiencies for us. In design, Watermaker Force Main, we're in the process of acquiring some easements. And Arrowhead Pump Station, that will be replaced, we've got two pump stations serving that subdivision. We will be able to eliminate one of the pump stations with our new design. Van Buren, Jackson, and Eastside Interceptors. Eastside is out on the street right now for bid. Eastside Interceptor, so an interceptor is a large diameter, gravity main. That's all an interceptor is. So we have one that basically goes from the bus barn on Crane and goes all the way over to the Ash Street Pump Station. That's the one that's out on the street for bid right now. About 40, 400 feet of NCTU rehab, and about 1,000 feet of open trench. And then, Van Buren, Jackson, about 5,000 feet, and that goes from Athan, Jackson, down to the Kansas River, basically immediately adjacent to the bus barn there at Crane. DCP Projects, 35th Impale, finally got the last utilities moved, get the contractor back on site, waiting on Bridlewood North and Prairie Trace for utilities and some easements. And Fairlon, between 25th and 28th. This is, this is really cool stuff, okay?
Okay.
You look on the left-hand side, large diameter, 78-inch corrugated metal pipe, CMP. You see the bottom, the invert, the flow line there, completely rusted out. What this was allowing is for the sediment around, bedding around the pipe to basically come up, which caused void between the top of the pipe and the pavement. You know, we've had two emergency repairs out there. This is allowing us to basically go in holistically and do this. On the right-hand side, again, this is more of our centrifugal force theme, so what happens is, they take this cementitious grout, and they're going in with a machine that's basically spinning it. We can put approximately a half-inch layer, it's reinforced with concrete, in each pass. So finished product is, it's two inches thick, it has tremendous flow capacity to it, you know, much better flow capacity in this pipe, even though it's two inches smaller diameter than the one on the left, because of just the C-factor, basically the friction loss that you have. So that is 25th to 28th on Fairlon. And with that, I will gladly stand for any questions that you have.
Deputy Mayor?
Go back to that last slide, if you can. This is really fun stuff. So it's the same pipe.
Yes, ma'am.
And they just, so did they leave all that stuff in there and just go over it?
No, the first thing that they do is they go in to get rid of those shards of pipe, and they basically take concrete and they re-establish the invert. And then, they come back in and they do their centrifugally spin casting of that cementitious grout.
Wow. That's interesting. Okay. Thank you.
Braxton, I know that you were talking about processing water. One of the things that we had years ago was, there was some concern about our water quality, and we had talked about everything from deep cleaning our water to activated carbon. Do you remember what I'm talking about? Where are we on that project?
Well, the first phase of it is relocation of our chlorine disinfection basins to help ensure that ongoing viability. And then, we have some items out in our CIP that would be, that we have as placeholders that would allow us to explore other technologies. Certainly, one of those would be the addition of powdered activated carbon. Another of those would be to add ozone as a pretreatment to help with taste and odor. You know, we're also looking at polyaluminum chloride, which is a different type of coagulant. It's more effective in winter. You know, looking at that, we're in consultation with Burns &amp; Mack right now, basically looking at those options. So, you know, ultimately, our goal is the absolute best quality water, and I would love to have the ability to treat for taste and odor, because we don't currently have that ability.
Thank you. Additional questions? All right. Thank you so much for your presentation. We now move on to the consent agenda of the corporate ring.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of October 5 through November 1, 2019, and enumerating said expenditures therein. B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, Appendix C of the International Fire Code, repealing Section 14.4130 of the Topeka Municipal Code. And C are the minutes of the regular meeting of November 12, 2019. And there's a And there's a list of cereal malt beverage applications before you, and staff is recommending approval.
Do we have any questions on the consent agenda? There is no questions. What is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Councilman Jensen, seconded by the Deputy Mayor. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. Nice to have 10 again. We now move on to number five, the action items. Item A of the clerk of read.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of $1,625,000 of taxable general obligation temporary note series 2019-C of the City of Topeka, Kansas, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax if necessary for the purpose of paying the principal of an interest on said notes as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body tonight, Director of Administrative and Financial Services, Jessica Lamendola, will go through the details related to the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the temporary notes. So I'll turn it over to Jessica.
Okay, so tonight, we're asking for you to approve a temporary note that the maturity date is set for December 1st of 2020, and it is essentially an internal temporary note where one fund of the city is lending to the other. The reason we're do, one of the reasons we're doing this is that for the past several years, the governing body has approved a variety of projects with the goal of using cash or reserves on hand to finance those projects. As we discussed earlier in the year, the debt service fund, which is where we pay debt service out of, can only be used to pay debt service-related costs. So we are unable to access the reserves in that fund to directly pay for capital projects. So by structuring the temporary note, the interest fee will stay within the city because it's just basically one fund paying another, but we will be able to access the reserves that are in the debt service fund in order to pay debt service related to these projects.
Questions for Ms. Lamendola? Seeing none? Councilman Jensen.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Jensen, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item B of the clerk of read.
B is authorizing a public hearing for December 10, 2019, for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed amendments to the 2019 operating budget.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd ask Deputy Director of Finance and Administrative Services, Nick Hawkins, to come forward. He'll present the information regarding our amendments for the, for the current 2019 operating budget. Nick?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So tonight is an annual process in the, as part of the budget process, where throughout the year, we monitor the performance of the various funds that we have in the city. And at the conclusion of the third quarter, we look and see which ones could potentially exceed their budget authority for the year. So this year, we identified four funds that we would like to ask for amendments, and this is a process that works identical to the operating budget process. We come to you to set a public hearing, which is the step that we have tonight, and then we have a public hearing at least two weeks after, and then we have action on the item. So tonight, I'm just going to quickly go through the funds that we are requesting. The first is the Special Alcohol Fund, which is generated from the special alcohol tax. Two-thirds of that goes to the general fund, a third going for general functions, a third going for parks, which we then transfer to the county, and the third goes to a special fund, which is managed by the Topeka Shawnee County Alcohol Drug Abuse Advisory Council. And so this is something that we've done the last several years where incumbences from the previous year have not been paid in that year, and so they roll over to the next year, and so we have to ask for that additional authority, but we do have a fund balance for that. The second is Federal Funds Exchange, which is a program that we enter into with the Kansas Department of Transportation that allows us to exchange federal funds with a state or another local agency to take advantage of different cost savings. And this is something that, again, we've done for several years, but most of the time the revenue goes straight into a capital project. This year, working with Public Works and looking back at that agreement, we decided to set up a formal fund to better track those expenses and revenues that come in through there. So this is a brand-new fund. Again, we already receive this revenue through the federal funds that we get, but this is just formalizing a fund for that. Third is the Special Highway Fund, also known as the Motor Fuel Tax Fund. In 2018, we made a mix of 10 vehicles and equipment. We made purchases on those. We did not receive those until this year. Several of those actually just coming this month, and just with the process of getting all those outfitted, it can take some time to get those into our possession. And so that's amendment for $900,000. Again, fund balance is more than adequate to cover these costs because we did budget for this in 2018. And then finally, the Information Technology Fund, requesting a budget amendment equal to $40,000 related to fees and legal fees associated with the cybersecurity incident that we had earlier this year. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Nick? Seeing no question, we would need a motion to set the hearing date. Councilman Cohen makes the motion. We have a second by Councilman Jensen. Additional questions? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item C of the clerk of read.
C is a resolution introduced by Brent Trout, City Manager, concerning to the establishment of Shawnee County Main Sewer District Number 87, Lateral District Number 3.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, this is an item of a resolution to consent to the request by Shawnee County to establish a sewer district that will service the Sherwood Village subdivision, which we considered and approved previously. Tonight, one of your signed-up speakers, which is also the speaker that I would call upon to explain in more detail, is Rick Schmidt.
Hey, Aaron, Council. I'm Rick Schmidt with SBB Engineering, here to represent Bill Rowland, who's the owner, developer of the Sherwood Village subdivision. Resolution you have in front of you really is, to keep it simple, is just a consent by the city to allow the county to create this district. And so the sewers that serve this subdivision are owned by the county. So in order to extend these sewers, we need to enlarge, well, not enlarge, but create a new sanitary sewer in the main district, so it'll allow us to extend them. So we filed that petition with the county, and basically, right now, what's, state law states that the county cannot expand any districts into the city without your consent. So really, that's, that's really all this is. If you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer them, if I can.
Any questions for Mr. Schmidt? Councilman Cohen? We have a motion for approval by Councilman Cohen, a second by Councilman Lesser. Questions, Councilwoman?
I didn't get my hand up fast enough, but I don't know, others have gotten calls, but we did, I got calls from people or contacts that were just concerned that the city was spending any money on this. And, and I, I think you answered it, but if you could affirm whether, or some city manager or somebody from our utilities, whether there's any service from the city involved in this project.
There is not. Now, this will be 100% funded by the developer. And all those sewers go to, all the sewage basically goes to the Sherwood Regional Plant, and so the developer pays a fee to the county for the processing of that sewage also. So there is no funds expended by the city.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have additional comments before we proceed with the vote? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item B of the clerk of read.
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, concerning zoning regulations for small cell wireless facilities, amending City of Topeka Code Sections 1855-030, 1855-190, 1860-010, and 8225-010, and repealing original sections.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item was presented at the last meeting. We had a discussion regarding it. Tonight, we ask for your consideration and approval of the ordinance approving zoning regulations for the regulation of small cell wireless facilities.
Do we have any questions for the staff? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the, the presentation that we had last year and, or last week, and the, the design requirements that we have in this proposal. What concerns me, we keep having issues of either tall cell towers, or now these smaller ones come up to us. And my, I know that cities all over the country are facing this challenge of whether we can control what goes in people's yards and the right-of-way, just like we are. And so what I think this ordinance that's proposed would do, and I understand the expediting and all that too, but it would take it off our radar. I think we need to stay current with what's happening with this and be prepared, be knowledgeable enough and, and on point enough with it, that if, if there's an opportunity to join with other cities and so on, to advocate for more control on behalf of our residents of where these go, I'd like to have it. And I don't know, I, I didn't get, didn't make the time to talk with you about it in advance, and so is there some way, if, if this needs to be expedited, that we could be alerted? And I'm open to my colleagues in terms of whether other people share that concern.
City Manager.
The response I have for that is, the staff currently, through their professional organizations and, and things that they read from their professional organizations, will alert them to changes that are occurring in federal law. So they're very much clued in as to what might change with regards to this. I don't see a lot changing in the near future relative to this. This was something that the industry moved forward through the regulation process, and I think that we'll see this probably stand for a period of time. But obviously, we, we track those things in all areas related to what might be new or coming down the road. And so from, from that, I think that any type of change that might occur that would cause us to have the ability to readdress and take some of this, if they give us back some authority, we surely will be ready to take it back from them.
Thank you. I, it still might be nice to be able to have some sort of just updates, reporting on how this, you know, even maps of where these holes are going in and the small cells as well. It's just...
We, we've been provided a lot of that information from the, from AT&amp;T, Cox, the different providers that are going to be coming. And so that information's being provided to us. We'll know where theirs are, and we can certainly pass that along.
Yeah, I think, a periodic update, if, 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 one of the things that this, these approvals do is prompt us to look at it and just worry about having it go off radar. So just a periodic report, if that's possible.
Right, and I think also for others that they'll want to know that also from the standpoint of, that's where they may begin to get increased capacity. You know, those are the places where 5G is going to be going in, and they're going to be very interested in knowing that as well because that's going to provide capacity for neighborhoods that maybe are having difficulties right now with being able to access the internet and so forth.
Well, and we, we face that dilemma in, in Ward Mead neighborhood about having that 150-foot pole. You know, you don't want to say no and not have the service, yet we don't want this whole town to look like a windmill farm. And, and so maybe even if it could be on the rotation, and again, I'll, I'll look at my colleagues, the same way we get these periodic utility reports, if there was just a periodic cell report, it'd be helpful. Because it is going to, when 5G comes, we're going to, stuff's going to happen. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Additional comments or questions before we proceed with the vote? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We need a motion.
Oh, I thought we had a motion for this one. We have, Councilman Emerson makes a motion, seconded by Councilman Dobler. Now, at this point in time, we do proceed with the vote. Thank you for that, Bernadette. I can't vote yet. Home rule.
Okay, we have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item E of the, of the agenda, if the clerk would read.
E is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, creating a new chapter 8.65 of the Topeka Municipal Code, requiring registration of vacant properties and properties that are on the subject of mortgage foreclosure proceedings.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the ordinance in your packet for consideration has got a number of modifications that were made based on the input that we received from the city council at our previous discussion session. And so from that, staff has reviewed the tapes and provided modifications to this ordinance. In order to be sure and address what those changes were, I'd like Sasha Han, our Neighborhood Relations Director, to review the major changes that were made in the ordinance and then answer any questions that you may have before we bring it, before it's considered. Sasha?
Your Honor, governing body members, good evening. So after our last discussion on this item, staff did go back, review the video, look over our notes, and worked with legal to provide the following modifications to the ordinance that you have included in your packet. We have adjusted the threshold time period for staff to consider a property chronically vacant from 60 days to 180 days in order to respond to folks' concern about that time period being too short and that it would inhibit productive activity on properties in the community. As well, we have added language specifying that properties intended for the program, the vacant portion of the program will be chronically vacant and unutilized. We've tried to really narrow the scope down on the vacant portion to those problem properties that we've talked about lots of different times, where there's no productive plan or work underway to bring the property back into productive use. In addition to that, we have adjusted the annual registration fee for the vacant properties down to $125 by annually or $250 a year in response to concerns that some of the owners of these vacant properties couldn't afford the registration fees, so we've tried to be sensitive to that. Language has been added to specify that properties that have acting, active building permits or active renovation or rehabilitation work ongoing will be excluded from the registration requirements. That is the bulk of the revisions that were made after the last discussion. You have two ordinances in your packet. You have the final draft version that is, is easier to read, and then you've got the marked-up version. Much of that markup was from previous work between staff, legal staff, and Neighborhood Relations staff to refine the language around the mortgage foreclosure registration and just to, to make some tweaks. So the changes that I've described just now are from the most recent conversation. I could go over the sections that were changed with you if you would like that level of detail, or I can simply answer questions, whatever your preference would be.
Councilman Jensen?
So I got numerous emails from snowbirds, and I just want to reiterate again on TV for everyone, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if you don't turn off the utilities to your home, it's not vacant. Is that correct? So even if you're gone for more than 180 days, if the utilities are on, it's not considered vacant, it wouldn't fall under this ordinance, correct?
I, yes, yes, sir. That is the way that we intend to enforce it.
So if you guys are gone for the winter, again, your house is not vacant, please come... come back to Topeka, we love you.
Additional questions from the body? We have several individuals signed up for public comment, and I wanted to ensure that people got the opportunity to speak before we got into further discussion. The first person signed up to speak on this is Mr. Greg Debacker.
Thank you, City Council, and Ms. Mayor. And I like the amendments that Sasha has presented. Still don't like the ordinance, but a couple of things, we had some people here last week that owned buildings in Noto. I like the fact that, you know, it's center construction. Noto would not be where it is today. There were a lot of vacant buildings over there, a lot of people took chances in Noto, and even in downtown Topeka now. I don't think we need an extra hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar or, you know, or two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee tied into that. I gave my story last week about buying a foreclosed property. I bought it at a sheriff's sale. It was foreclosed. I was shocked that I got it, because the owner did have equity in it. So, since the owner had equity, I could not take title, sheriff's title, to that property for a year. So, that house stood vacant for a year. I still own it today. It's one of, I'm getting rid of my rentals, because I'm just tired of being a landlord. But I still own that property. After the one year, I went to court, got a journal entry, got a sheriff's title, put bio-sighting on it, put all-new windows in it, still own the property. It would've cost me extra. I don't, I don't think it's fair to an investor to have to pay that extra fee. We're already paying property taxes on it. I think the bill will probably create more vacant properties, because people like me, which I'm not doing it again, you have to probably be a special individual to be a landlord, number one, and also to go buy vacant buildings and take the chance of rehabbing them. You gotta be a little bit crazy, I think. City needs to encourage the city to, or the city needs to go after the county. You know, if they're not paying taxes, go after the county. You as a body, I guess maybe me, I should go to the county, talk to the city council, county councillor, attorney, get these buildings back on the tax rolls. If they're vacant three years, they're not paying taxes. There's a law against that. Let's go after that. And I think one of the things is, the county or the code enforcement said that they could not locate owners. I tell you what, I've got three gals at work. We search, before we do any job, we make sure we know who the owner of the property is, because we get a lot of scam calls. We'll do, for no charge, find the ten properties that the city says they can't find the owners of them, and we'll find them. I'll volunteer that, so, thank you. We'll do that for you.
Any questions?
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Anthony Garvin.
Hello, Mayor, councilpeople. I'm not good at this, but I just heard about this last week, so I'm not really familiar with a lot of it, but my concern is, I buy a lot of empty houses from tax titles. And like Mr. Debacker said, a lot of times, they tell you that you need to wait at least a year before you do any work on those properties. This would affect me very heavily if that was the situation. Also, I don't know what the purpose of the cost is. Like I said, I don't know, but he touched on it. We pay a lot of taxes in this city, you know, and if you look from the perspective of code compliance, when you don't take care of your property, they have so many fees that they charge you for. So, as far as empty and vacant properties, they already have that covered. Not only them, but if they sit and they don't pay taxes on them for over a four-year period, the appraiser's office confiscates them, and then they're sold for taxes. I think this is really gonna hurt us as, and we are very small, I'm very small, you know, and to be assessed these fees would really stop me from purchasing those type of properties. I don't know if you've talked to the appraiser office concerning that part of this bill. It was, I guess that's basically what I wanted to add to it is, have y'all ever, have y'all looked at the fees that code compliance charged on those empty properties and not cutting grass? And, you know, if you're looking for taxes, I can give you a good idea. If you just go over on California, the overpass between four-thirty and five o'clock, and look at the exit out of Topeka after people get off working, I would say a city tax, income tax, would be a whole lot better than taxing people because of property. I mean, there's such an exodus out of this city that it's almost scary, and I haven't looked and still don't gauge to see the people going that way. If you're looking for money, let's, let's, let's look at real issues and real ways that don't hurt our people, because hurting the people here in town, small business, we always talk about small business, this, stuff like this is killing us. Just go and see it sometime. Just look at the people leaving here headed to Lawrence and Kansas City, and then think about a city income tax. You'd get a whole bunch of money. I guess that was my end?
You got it. You still have a little time.
Huh? So, so that's what I wanted to just point out, is if you, if you don't want to take your own car over to California, I'd be glad to give you a ride, because I mean, between four, just coming here, on the way here, there was such an exodus. I said, good Lord, these are people taking our city dollars back to the surrounding cities, using them in those cities, they're benefiting off of us. What are they doing for us? Some people will probably say, they do spend money here. They're not spending it between four and five, because they're headed that way. So, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you for giving me this time.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Steve Vogel.
Good evening to you all. LaShawna County Landlord Association has stated disposition on this ordinance in an email sent to the city. The following comments are mine and not from the Landlord Association. I would urge all council members to vote against this ordinance. Since nineteen seventy, Topeka has grown significantly in land area, but very little, if any, in population. This fact alone guarantees there will be many vacant residential and commercial properties. If we could magically restore all vacant and blighted properties to good condition, many would still be vacant. In the absence of population growth, any property that changes from vacant to occupied status will result in another property changing from occupied to vacant status. Punishing a responsible property owner who has a vacant property that is kept in good condition only gives more evidence to people who say that Topeka has an unfriendly business environment. Many of you get complaints from your constituents about vacant and blighted properties in their neighborhood. How are you going to respond to a constituent who has a well-kept vacant property, and they have just received a bill from the city? What if they say there are adjacent occupied properties that have been blighted for years with no consequences? If any of you think this isn't a problem, I would invite you to take a ride around the city with a few of us landlords. I would urge any of you who want to learn more about this issue to study what was done in South Bend, Indiana. It is a city approximately the same size of Topeka. They had a very bad problem with blighted properties. In twenty-twelve, Mayor Pete Buttigieg, after a lot of study, implemented a bold plan called a thousand houses in a thousand days. In about a three-year period, the city demolished around five-hundred-and-seventy houses and rehabbed approximately four-hundred-and-thirty more. The overall consensus was that this program was a success. However, there are a substantial number of people who are very critical of the program. The South Bend project was a much more comprehensive approach than what you are considering tonight. The main concern I have about this ordinance is that it would be a disincentive for real estate investors to purchase these vacant properties. I would like to highlight Section four D, which reads in part, "Within ten days of the transfer, the new mortgagier shall register the property or update the existing registration." Also, Section four E reads in part, "Any and all previous unpaid fees, fines, and penalties, regardless of who the mortgagier was at the time of the registration, was required, including but not limited to unregistered periods during the foreclosure process, are the responsibility of the transferee and are due and payable with the updated registration." Being a real estate investor is difficult enough without being threatened with a fee simply because a property is vacant. The proposed ordinance is, in my view, a step in the wrong direction. That is all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
The next person signed up is Mr. Richard Laird. Richard Laird? The next person signed up to speak is Mr. Joseph Ledbetter.
Evening, Governor Barney. I was just reading through some of this again, and although I appreciate there's a lot of redlining and changes made, and some of that came from the public last week also, I certainly agree with the hundred-and-eighty days versus thirty days. One of the lines still talked about up to five-hundred dollars, so I don't know if that was just an error, or, I was trying to find it, I think it was line fifty-four? Yeah, line, yeah, one-fifty-four. One of the things I was wondering last week was, where does this money go to? Who's fund? And so, whether it's two-hundred-and-fifty or, or less, or up to five-hundred dollars, where does it go? And one of the concerns I had, Mr. Debacker just eloquently said it, I don't find it that hard to find who owns properties. In fact, I was able to teach some of the code people that were working high crests a few years ago how to do it. It wasn't that difficult, and they were grateful that somebody took the time to teach them how to do it on a computer with the appraisal's office. And if you have an LLC, all you have to do is go to the Secretary of State's office, you can find the registered agent, and that's the way to get legal notification on these various properties. So, I don't really understand what the services we're buying, or why it can't be done internally, or maybe Mr. Debacker is volunteering it. He might get that in writing. He might, I don't know how many properties you might be, he might be overwhelmed, or he may not. So, anyway, I'm not real comfortable with this ordinance, and these are my words only. These are my, simply my opinion, as is anything I come up and speak to you about. It was mentioned earlier that it'd be nice to have a city income tax, and what the person probably doesn't understand, and I'm not faulting him for a lack of knowledge, is you've got to take that over to the legislature. And we're still waiting on a viaduct, okay? So, and that's been a while. But I just want to say that some things look like they're easy to solve, and then aren't, and then other things are probably easier to solve than you think. But those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I received a note in the process of the meeting indicating that an individual was not able to sign up to speak on time. However, he is here. If we are going to accept these comments, there would have to be a motion to suspend the rules, that we could allow that individual an opportunity to speak.
So.
Okay? So, we have a motion in a second. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We have nine yes, Mrs. Clerk voting no.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. Mr. Patrick Delapp. While Mr. Delapp is coming, Mary, I saw you standing since we suspended the rules. Would you like to speak as well?
I would.
Please, yes, absolutely. I will call you after.
Let me start off, I sent emails to everybody, what's passing around, they've got nice colored pictures in there, if you looked at them. First thing I want to talk about is when we have a foreclosure, after the sale, in this case, the house was at, gosh, fourteen oh three, excuse me, thirteen oh nine class. We looked up how it is. It says in the journal entry, who the new owner will be, or who purchased it. In this case, it's Core First Vacant Trust. Now, they did not actually get the deed there, because they had equity in it. Instead, they've got a certificate of purchase. After the right of redemption is gone, which is three months, then the court can issue a deed. In this case, the bank only had full control of the property for eleven months, and then they sold it to somebody else. The claims have been made, I heard before, that Neighborhood Relations is getting calls from all kinds of banks, asking, do they have registration? That does not make sense to me, because Neighborhood Relations have gone through our time period, urban renewal, housing in neighborhoods, and neighborhood relations. Why wouldn't they just call the clerk? And the clerk couldn't answer that question? I think she could. I don't believe those calls are being made up there for that. A question was also made, well, what about estate owner, things like this? In Kansas, when you're a corporation, you have to register it as a forward agent with the Secretary of State's office. The Secretary of State's office then takes over control to be the resident agent for that corporation. It's four blocks away from here. That's the only person we have to serve, is him, and he'll make sure the other, the foreign corporation gets a hold of it. It's really not that hard. Now, in this paper here, I ran around, taking a look at some other things on it. We don't need this ordinance, it's just hanging over, over the mortgage crisis. The Puke Charitable Trust surveyed different cities who had such building orders and registration artists, and the cities could not say or show any results, have these houses been leased, sold, improved as a result of the taxes and fees. They couldn't answer that question. Over here, the first picture is down here at Forest Street and Fisker, where it converged. That's a strip mall. You know, looks good. They have five or six units in there, half of them are vacant, has been someone on time. One woman is desperately trying to sell her property, because she has a note on the door, "All offers considered." That's how bad she wants to get, get rid of, or that. We got another one, which is across the street. It's an automotive garage, now owned by Potwin Church. They're only using it for storage. Would they now be wired up, because it's not zoned for storage? It's going to be an automotive shop? Well, you could easily argue, yes, they should be paying the fee, too, because they're not fully utilizing that building, as it was zoned. Then we have another picture of another strip mall, by Roach Hardware. It's got five, six buildings, and half of them are all... Roach Hardware. It's got five, six buildings, and half of them are also vacant, too. Finally, and I'd better hurry up, that's last, well, I'd like an extension. Any case, we have the College Hill Town Homes. City of Topeka has a financial interest in this. Our financial interest, we had guaranteed that mortgage being paid by TIF. In reality, we had paid out $400,000 to $500,000 of our tax dollars but can't meet it. Of those times, town homes, there was like 24, 25 of them, 11 of them have been vacant. Several of them haven't been, had an occupant since they were built. They, too, will have to pay that fee. If it's $500, we just throw in there, you know what? That's $11,000 they would have to pay to the City of Topeka. Question, though, will they really be paying for it, or are we going to have to reimburse them our tax dollars to pay that $11,000 fines? We don't need this. There are very, there are much more things we can do to improve Topeka, and that's not punishing people. I'd like an extension.
Do we have a motion for an extension for Mr. Delapp?
Motion extends for two minutes.
Councilwoman Hiller extends for two minutes. Councilwoman Emerson seconds. We now proceed by voting.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the motion passes. You have two more minutes, Mr. Delapp.
Okay. Some of the things we can do to improve it. Minute, what Kansas City is doing. The $1 homes. They've now gone up to $1,000, so what was so well-received. You basically get a house for a dollar, you fix it up, guess what? Instead of it's just yours, we will also give you the money it was going to cost to tear down. Win-win. HUD has a 50-50 program for police, fire departments, school teachers. If they have a house on foreclosure and it's been listed and nobody's bought for six months, you get to buy that house half off, 50% off. It's a program well-available. They've been showed this before us. We can start land banking. We can have Title I loans. Title I loans, I've brought this and been talking to the NIRAs and people like this, trying to get it on board. What Title I loans are, if you don't have the money that picks up your house, or you don't, not after all the programs and our Neighborhood Relations, they will loan you the money to fix the house, and it can exceed the value of the property. What's based upon is your ability to repay. They don't care. All the banks care about if you go bad, can you sell your house, get the money out of it. People are walking away from the city. They are voting with their feet. My neighbors getting out of Topeka. They already bought in Kansas City. Now they're afraid they're going to be, not going to be able to sell the house for what they owe on it. Here's another house, November 2nd, 1224 Southwest Hader. It sold at auction. It was not an absolute sale, but the people attended there, and she sold it. The county appraiser had it at $75,000. Guess what it sold for? $15,000. And people were real hesitant to buy it because they're complaining big time about being beat to death by the city on this and that. We need to change this, gentlemen. We need to find a carrot instead of a stick trying to improve the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mary Fraze.
My name is Mary Fraze. I own Next Home Professionals here in Topeka, and I am the number-one Realtor for selling the most foreclosures in this town. I do agree that there's a problem with vacant properties. I agree that there's a problem with abandoned properties, and I would love to see a solution for that. And I will tell you, as somebody that does represent a lot of foreclosures, I have 38 on my books right now in my pipeline of various stages. Some of them I've had for a year and a half. I think that there needs to be a little more education before something like this is passed as to what the guidelines are on the process for foreclosures, because it's not as easy as saying, "Let's go find the bank that owns this, and let's send them an email or a letter, and then they're going to have to pay it," and so on and so forth. It doesn't really work like that. There's a lot of different departments that are involved, a lot of different hands in it. You know, you may think you found the right person. It's sitting on their desk because they have 250 properties they're in charge of. It doesn't get looked at for four months. What's sad is that a foreclosure used to begin after 120 days of someone being late. A lot of the properties that I go to now that are in foreclosure, they haven't made a payment for 12 months, 15 months, a year and a half, so on and so forth. And sometimes it's been vacant that whole time. So that's a challenge. I also feel that finding the person who owns a property or is responsible for the property is actually with the Internet and all that's out there. It is an easy process. I do it all the time. I know a lot of people in here do. So there could be a little more education on that. I also feel like that the people that have no local manager, you know, it says that within so many period of time, you have to find a local person if you're 60 miles or further away, you know, to take care of that property. Well, that's, could be a little bit of a challenge, because people who have a vacant property or are not making a payment or in foreclosure have no money. And so they're not going to hire someone to manage that while they're waiting for the foreclosure process to go through, or while they're waiting for the redemption period to expire. And the redemption period isn't always 90 days. It depends on the loan program, if it's a reverse mortgage, of how much equity they have in it. It could be as much as two years. So that needs to be addressed. There needs to be some rules in place on what it's going to look like if the property is at this scenario or that scenario. So I think there needs to be a little more education on that before you get too far into this. I also feel like there needs to be, I like his comment about creating a carrot instead of a stick. You know, there are some communities that I've done business in that they create an incentive to buy for investors to come in and buy these foreclosed properties, or these vacant properties that have sat there dilapidated. So, you know, that's not a bad idea, too, to offer some sort of incentive in that. Again, I think it's a tough deal because it does affect values in the neighborhood. You don't realize it until you own the house next door, and you decide you want to sell it, and that's the neighbor's house. So I do agree it's an issue. There needs to be a solution. I just think there needs to be a little more education, because there's a lot of questions from reading the proposal, and there's a lot of loops that I think, you know, haven't been addressed, just from lack of knowledge of how the process works. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. This concludes the public comments. At this point in time, we are open for discussion as the body. Deputy Mayor.
Could we have either Sasha or City Manager kind of address some of those, like the year waiting and what that would look like?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Sasha, if you would, go ahead and come forward.
Sometimes I think we have the answer to some of the concerns.
And then I have some other notes of mine, depending on how she may answer some things.
Okay, I made a list. Hopefully, I didn't miss anything. There were several comments about tax collection and this being about generating taxes. This is not about generating revenues for the city. This is about incentivizing the owners of properties that are vacant and unutilized and blighting our neighborhoods to get their properties into productive use in the neighborhoods. That's what this is about. As to the question of where the fees go, they'll go to the general fund, and they will support the operations of your departments that work out of the general fund. But if you want to connect it to the code enforcement group, then you can think of that as fees collected to help offset the cost of caring for these properties that are not currently being cared for. I can't tell you how many hundreds of abatements we perform each year with your tax dollars on properties that are not owned by the city. Hundreds. So that's what the fees will help to support. Vacant but maintained is okay. I would just reference what Ms. Fraze just said, and it's okay until you live next to it. So we could all share stories about vacant properties that are technically maintained to the minimum standard of the IPMC, but they still are causing real problems in the neighborhoods in Topeka. Demolition and rehab was used as an example of tools that should be considered. We already have a very robust demolition program. Over the past four years, we've either demolished or been responsible for the owner demolishing over 1,000 properties in this community. I can't give you the number of rehabs that we've performed because I've lost track. We can provide that information to you, but this governing body approves a budget that provides millions of dollars every year to this community that goes to rehabilitate properties in the community. I cannot stress enough that this is an additional tool that we will have in our toolbox that will help us to address two specific types of properties: chronically vacant and unutilized. Nobody is doing anything with it. It might meet the minimum standard of the IPMC, but it's just sitting there, and it's not helping anyone's property value, and it's certainly not helping anyone's quality of life. So that's the vacant piece. The foreclosures, those are properties that all of you have experienced struggles with in the areas that you represent. When we have local banks, it's much easier to identify the correct person in the staff structure of the banks to talk to, but when they're not here, it's much more difficult. No one has ever said that we were not able to identify the owners. What we said is, we very often get incorrect information on how to contact the owners. So that is a benefit that we see from the adoption of this program. That's not what's driving the presentation of this program to this governing body. What's driving it, and I'll go back to what I told you the last time we discussed this, is you all. You all charged us with finding tools to address blight in this community. We think this is a viable tool, but if it doesn't fit what you feel is appropriate for Topeka, then don't approve it. We think it will address some real issues in the community. Okay. Out-of-town owners and resident agents. The resident agent component or resident representative is only required for the vacant portion of the program. So the banks are not required to have an additional person that lives locally represent them. That's not what it's for. What it's for is vacant properties that we have emergency situations at, fires, crimes, real emergencies in the neighborhoods. And our emergency personnel, along with our code enforcement staff, at times can have a very difficult time locating an owner, and especially an out-of-state owner or out-of-town owner. A resident agent would help us solve some of those problems, because we would have someone local to contact in an emergency situation that could either provide us with the information that we need, or they can connect us readily with the owner of the property because they represent them. That's the purpose of the resident agent. Foreclosure registration, that portion of the program, if you, and we refined the language, you could see that in the marked-up version, because we wanted to make it very clear that the point at which a bank is required to register a foreclosed property is when the foreclosure process is completed and the former home buyer or owner is no longer involved. That's the point at which we want a registration from the banks, because now the property sits there, and may, in many cases, as you all have experienced or have shared with you, remain in the name of the former homeowner that lost their home. So in some cases, we're contacting those folks, and they don't even own it anymore. That is where we want that registration requirement to be triggered. When they are out of the picture, and now the bank is solely responsible and they control the property, now they need to communicate with us. That's the intent of the registration program for foreclosed properties. I'm confident in the language that's included in the ordinance for the foreclosure piece of it. Wyandotte County is operating under a similar model, and we've had legal address concerns about the language not being specific enough for the foreclosure portion of the registration. That's why your marked-up version has all the lines through and replaced words when we're referring to a mortgaged property that's been foreclosed. So those were the items that I took note of. And I would also note the handout that Mr. Delapp handed you states that on October 15th, I said we had 25 properties that we were not able to identify the property owners to. That is incorrect. I have never made a statement that we only have 25 problem properties that we cannot identify contact information for the owner. So I would be happy to answer any questions you might have about all of that information.
City Manager, you also have some remarks.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Sasha. That covered most of the items. The others that I would mention is, there was one comment made that this, you know, the looking at zoning areas, and this is not to address anything that might have a wrong zoning relative to it. We also have looked at the land bank possibility, and that is something that, in the future, we are still pursuing. It's one of those things where you do one thing at a time. And so that is something that we still are looking at in the future of doing land banking and being able to take properties, get them rehabbed, and turn back over to others at a much less expensive method. And so that's still something that's on our plate in the future. I guess the other thing is, last item I had, oh, that was it. I think, you know, one of the things for me is that I think this is a tool that we can utilize. I think that it is capable of providing an impact in the neighborhoods when we look at what's provided to them for being able to understand better who owns properties, who we need to be working with in order to be able to have an impact on getting the property taken care of and making it better for those neighbors that are around it, so.
Additional comments and questions from the body. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Could you talk just a little bit more about what would constitute a plan that somebody could file if they fell into this situation? And, you know, would a house that's got a contracted Realtor representing that, that someone's trying to sell, would that constitute as a vacant property plan? Could you just give me some examples of, I'm in this situation, how do I work with you to get out of it without having to pay the fee?
Right. So in discussions with legal, we talked about all the many different scenarios that we could find ourselves faced with in trying to decide, is this a vacant property? And the feedback that I got from them, because they're very wise, was that we cannot, in that document, list every single scenario that staff is going to encounter. So we are going to need to try to think through what those things will be and develop SOPs and operating guidelines that will be sensitive to things like, hey, I have my property listed for sale. There's a whole slew of properties that are vacant currently on Kansas Avenue, and they are currently being marketed for sale. If we are looking to use this tool to address chronically vacant and unutilized, then a for-sale sign where it's listed by a real estate agent would indicate that the owner is either trying to get it into productive use, something's happening. So those would be excluded. And we didn't include all of that language in your ordinance, because it's too much to include in an ordinance, and we would in all likelihood miss something. So I would hope that you would trust staff that the intent here is chronically vacant properties with no plan in the foreseeable future to address the condition of vacancy that's causing problems in the neighborhoods.
So if I might, what I hear you telling me is, anyone in this situation who cared about the property could get out of the situation, working with you guys, through an untold massive number of options?
Absolutely. And on the flip side of that, there are, of course, other folks that can get out of it by utilizing those same, you get what I'm saying? So...
There's just a huge number of tools where you would not have to register?
Yes, there are. There are.
One more question, if I might.
Yes, sir.
So we touched on real briefly the difference between finding a name on the Internet and actually contacting somebody or serving them, you know, with notice that there's a violation. Could you talk a little bit more about the particular challenges that your department has in the difference of finding a name and actually contacting the other? There seems to be some ambiguity about where the disconnect is on that.
Sure. So the Register of Deeds is the official property record, right? And that is who, that's the go-to that we use to identify who the property owner is. But that information remains unchanged with the Register of Deeds in terms of, okay, I bought a property 15 years ago, and here's the mailing address that I was using at the time. Flash forward, I may have moved. I no longer live at that address, but I didn't update the Register of Deeds because I'm still getting my tax data. I still get what I need. Or, another example for you is a property owner who has a registered post office box. That gives us zero information on how to contact them. And additionally, the Register of Deeds doesn't include phone numbers. Phone numbers and email addresses for more thorough communication than a letter that I'm going to send to you and hope it gets to the appropriate address and that you open it is much different than me proactively reaching out to you, trying to call you on the phone or emailing you. That's the information that is never included in the Register of Deeds data that's available, and one of the big missing pieces, in our opinion. But those property records at the Register of Deeds are not real-time, always up-to-date, every second of the day. every second of the day.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lesser, to be followed by Councilwoman Dobler.
Thank you. That would be the only other thing that I would also address is, you know, it sounds good to get up here and all be funny and laugh about how you can get on the internet and find who you need to talk to, and get who you need to talk to. Because that's two different things right there, too. Finding who you need to talk to, and then who do you need to talk to about this situation. The internet is a good tool, it does give us that, but, you know, I speak from experience. I had a hard problem with the landscaping at the movie theater up on the hill that Mr. Fyander worked with me, so we can make sure that they did that. It did not take me, it took me some time to locate who it was that owned it, took some time to then locate who it was I needed to call, then three more calls down the line of that person, finally getting to that person, I finally got an opportunity to talk to someone who could make some decisions. Same thing with the old Coyote Canyon. Grass is getting to be six feet tall. I made several calls, figured out who owned it, so who was trying to find it. Point being is, the amount of time I spent doing all that was probably in excess of three to four hours, honestly, in tracking all this down. If you have the information, it's part of what the record is, it has to be there. It gets our staff much quicker, it's much better use of resources, and it's disingenuous to just think, just because we have an internet, where else do you find the information just like that? So I appreciate your work on this issue. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dobler, to be followed by Councilwoman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, is there an appeals process? I mean, you talked about kind of the ambiguity of the definition of, you know, who's working to improve their property or sell a property.
Absolutely.
What does the appeal process look like?
The appeal process mirrors the appeal process for any code enforcement case. So they, within 10 days of written notice of the requirement to register, they would have the right to request in writing an appeal before an administrative hearing officer.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Hahn, a few minutes ago, you were talking, you gave an example of buildings on Kansas Avenue that are vacant right now, but for sale. So are you saying that if something was for sale or for rent, then it does not, this does not apply to it?
In my mind, that definitely would be excluded from the chronically vacant, unutilized properties. But again, going back to the good guidance, you know, that we can't include every single scenario. If, hindsight's always 20/20, I would definitely have included language about the sale or rent of property in that exclusionary list, prior to you guys having the final version, but unfortunately, it didn't work out that way. If this ordinance were approved, I would be developing SOPs with our property maintenance staff that would exclude properties that are actively being marketed for sale or for rent. Actively.
That would just mean.
Yes, and that utilities, yeah, the utilities, in a rental house scenario, it's probably a little bit of both, but I doubt that every landlord is turning utilities off between tenants because of the need for utilities when you're either working on or showing a property.
Yeah, I guess.
So that would exclude them from that, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. And I really appreciate your guys' work on this, and it's much better than it was a month ago. I'm just, I'm just really worried, there's a lot of interpretation that'll be, you know, up to a lot of individual people here. And I'm just, to me, there's just too much ambiguity in this. So I do appreciate what you're trying to do, and, you know, if there were some of those things tightened up, I could support some of it in the future, but right now, it's current form, I can't. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz, to be followed by Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do agree, we need a tool, I just don't know if this is the tool. You know, I've had so many calls this weekend. I had a gentleman tell me that he has an apartment building, and he spends more time taking out the homeless people that have tore up his apartment, then he goes back in and fixes it up, then they come back and, you know, he's boarded it, he's tried to secure it in every way he can. And I, you know, I feel for them. I also know a gentleman that took me, invited me to his house. He lives over in southeast Topeka, actually in Mr. Emerson's district, and he bought it for $12,000, and he went room by room by room and fixed it up. And now, it's good, but he said, if this was passed, I wouldn't have been able to pour all my money in there, as opposed to just, you know, I'm paying a fee, I'd like to see that money go back into the house, and not some fee, you know? I don't know what the answer is. I'd like to see us maybe send this back to committee.
Can, just, can I respond, ma'am? So if he was actively renovating room by room by room, then he would have an active renovation ongoing, and the property would be excluded from the requirement to register?
Well, I, well, but see, I just don't like saying, some people gotta register, because we're gonna try to find out who the homeowner is, and some people don't. I think it has to be across the board. And I think, I just think there's a better way to do it. I had Wichita's, and I can't find it. At one time, I looked at it, they make everybody register, and pay like a small fee, not $500 or $125. And I don't know what the answer is, I understand what you're trying to do, but I just don't know if this is the right tool.
And we did bring you all a replica of Wichita's program. When we first spoke about this, the neglected property registration was based off of Wichita's program.
This, mine was years ago, so it's probably been updated since then, when I had.
Well, you sent it to me, and actually, I've been in communication with the city of Wichita and their staff, and although they did respond, that that program was very effective for the area that they were trying to address, there was a specific area. They no longer operate the program because of funding cuts and staffing issues, so it's not currently being utilized in Wichita. But it did, their response, their feedback was that it was very effective to address the neglected properties that it was intended to address at the time that they enacted it.
I don't remember them having such a high fee, though, Sasha.
I believe their fee is $125.
Per year?
Yes.
Per year?
For a neglected property, yes.
I'd have to look at that, but, thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate, I don't recall us giving a specific directive to work on this, but nonetheless, of course, everybody's concerned, and so I really appreciate, you know, coming up with the idea and the work that you've done on it. In short, I mean, all ideas are good ideas, and it's worth looking through, but I have been through this. I don't think it's viable. I appreciate the work that you've done. It's got internal conflicts, it's got, it's idealistic, but I don't think, the testimony that we heard today, all of it, everything from the foreclosure processes to the disincentive to investors, we didn't hear as much as I've experienced before, which is, the people that will pay will be the vulnerable people whose husband just died, and they can't, you know, bear to get rid of the property, and no, they're not getting ready to sell it, and that's the one that'll hit the papers, too. You can be sure, it's how, it's oppressing somebody who's, who either, you know, is, when you're doing anything from a development like Kansas Avenue, where it's been so down for so long, and to bring it back, which is happening for us, it's phased. You don't do it all at once. We all, people in neighborhoods and people with commercial properties, we get, as I call it, sick of looking at them. But is that a good enough reason to charge a private property owner, especially one who's taking care of their property, a fee just to own that property and do whatever they want with it? I think there are even legal risks to this, plus the practical risk of that business, that investor who bought a property at a tax sale and has to wait a year or more, or the various stories. And I know that staff, you've learned a lot about them in terms of proposing the rental registration ordinance, and kind of working all the way through it, and then, and then when you've done the demolition program, every one of them has its own story. And there's a reason for that, and a lot of the houses that people want demolished don't really need to be demolished, they're just sick of looking at them, and you've worked through many, many, many of those as well. A couple of the flaws, and I have, I'll keep it short, but itemize the things that I saw, and I had three pages, but the way this is built, when it went out of here last time, Councilman May said, can you stick just to the foreclosures? Cut this thing down, not the three different, the neglected and the vacant and the foreclosures, and instead, only the neglected went off, and now we have vacant and foreclosures in here. The foreclosures apparently can be done by banks, but I've spent some time with city managers, saying, how does this work? The vacant properties are gonna have to be turned in by our inspectors. So they're gonna have to keep an eye on them, they're gonna have to figure out when the six-month threshold has been hit. When the foreclosures sell, there's a system that the company can follow, but if there's a private sale, how's that gonna be tracked? Councilman Dobler asked about appeals, and the appeals are in here, but those are gonna go through the administrative hearing officer. So, and further, there is a requirement in here that says, every one of the properties that's registered this way has to have a three-by-five card, at least, in the front door with that contact information. It's up to our code-compliant staff to follow that up, and we're supposed to pursue any property that doesn't have that card on the front door, using the same section of the code, a criminal code, to file charges and take it to court, to charge them a fine, I think it is, with that court. All of those will cost money, and if we are surfacing between 500 and 700 properties at a time of the foreclosed and vacant, actually, the census said we had 2,600 vacancies when I checked preparatory for this session last time. Maybe some of those were very short-term, but we're talking about hundreds and hundreds of properties, and almost all of us have vacant homes in the block that we live on, or in the neighborhood that we have. Some of them have been vacant for years, they're quietly buttoned up, they're mowed, they're taken care of, yes, they're vacant. You know, with all the things that we need to do in our city, and incentivizing, looking at ways to get those individuals that one of the speakers talked about, you know, right now, we don't have buyers for those houses, because our population has been flat or has shrunk, and we've continued building houses. So we can't, we can force somebody to get it moving, but we need more people here, so that those, there's customers for those businesses that we want to take, to go into those commercial structures, and people that want to live in those neighborhoods. I mean, part of what we're doing with downtown is to reinvest in downtown, so that then it will push out again, as cities naturally do. I don't know, it's tempting to want to hurry that process. I think all of us want to hurry that process, but I don't think penalty fines for just owning a property is the way to do it. We've talked a lot about being development-friendly, and we already have the code, which will, if somebody's not taking care of it, if it's not secure, or the weeds are growing, we have code, and those fees are about $140, plus you can end up going to court on it, and they double if you've been written up more than once in a 12-month period, I think it is, so that there's some escalation if the owner doesn't take care of the property. Already, what we'd be talking about doing is adding these fees on top of that, whether, you know, just whether we need it or not, if somebody's taking care of the property, but in addition to the code compliance work and the fees. For those people who aren't paying their property taxes, this system is set up to just put those fees on as a lien on the property. We're never gonna get it, you know, it'll go through the tax sale and start over, and we'll get a few of them. But I don't know that looking at it as a revenue producer works either. If we were to continue on this, there's sync-up that's needed between the language on securing the property. This is introducing new language that's different than what we have in the code. Overgrowth is one of the signals for being vacant in this one. Right now, code is not enforcing overgrowth, other than grass in the code. Public Health and Safety Committee is dealing with issues like that, as well as eventually we'll get to the issue of mothballing, the ability to take a historic structure or one that's just not ready, for whatever reason, it's not timely to get it fixed up, but to be able to secure it. There's many more pieces to this, but I do think, we've had a fiscal note on here of zero. In Ms. Hahn's remarks, she pointed out that Wichita said they dropped it because of staffing cuts. The sample that I read earlier said you should have at least a half-time person on it for the reporting and the monitoring and so on. I don't see this as a no-cost thing for the city either. Our staff does, in my opinion, an amazing job, in terms, the code-compliant staff, in terms of the volume that they do and the great work that they do. I don't see how we can add this much volume, even with a service working on part of it, and be net ahead for it. I think there's just so many downsides. So I hope that we vote this down today, that if, you know, in six months, if we've worked on the various pieces and come back with something, but rather than carry it forward, the staff has done so many iterations, and I just, I can give you all the rest on the list, but I just, it's not functional, as I see it, and I, again, I appreciate their work, but I don't think it'll work for us. Thank you.
Deprimaire.
I get discouraged when the community and us ask staff to do something, they do it, and we shoot everything down. We ask them to come up with a plan, as a result of complaints, and then it amazes me that we get the handout, we hear the explanations, and people still don't get it. I mean, they're still saying things that she's already explained is not gonna be affected. So it amazes me that we, some of us, and I'm not talking about just you, I'm not talking about you, Emerson, that, you know, that you missed that.
Henderson.
Because, I don't know if you, I don't know, it's like someone explaining something to you, but you've already got it in your head, and you just don't hear it. And then, and I hear people say, buying these properties, I'm buying these properties, I'm trying to rehab them, rehab them. Buying properties doesn't get it. You've gotta keep the property up. I mean, anybody who out there buy property, don't buy it and let it sit there. That doesn't, that's not doing anything for anybody. And if you can't keep up your property, and you have to leave it, and it's vacant, then don't keep, I mean, if you can't keep it up, then you don't need the property. I think this is a great way, I think staff did what we asked them to. I think we can try it, if it doesn't work, you tweak it, if it doesn't work at all, you go on to something else. But I think it's a good start, and I think they did a good job. Thank you.
Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. So a lot of my comments will echo Councilwoman Clear's. You know, it's fascinating to me that everybody throws out all these scenarios that Ms. Hahn has explicitly stated would not be required to pay the registration fee. So there's all these fears about, everybody gonna have to pay all these fees and all this registration, but yet, almost every scenario that was presented tonight does not need the fee to be paid. It's not the quote-unquote habitually abandoned structures, and please, correct me if I'm wrong, so, you know, no, the landlords are not gonna be paying this fee. No, the people who are trying to renovate a house are not gonna be paying this fee. The intent of this is to fill a void where the IPMC doesn't cover, and Councilwoman Hiller, you mentioned that we have strong property codes. There are places where they're not working, clearly. If they worked, then the last five years we've had the IPMC would have solved those problems, and it hasn't. So I'm pleased that we have new tools and new options to work forward, because there are gaps in our process that's not working. No, this is not perfect, but I would challenge you, nothing ever is. You know, the IPMC is not perfect, and when that was presented, that was gonna solve all of our community problems. It didn't, and neither will this, but it's a good next step. It's a good thing to try. You know, I am all for incentives and carrots, and what we can do to encourage people in the community. I want to know who's gonna pay for that. I want to know where that money's gonna come from, because let me tell you, we don't have it, folks. So, yeah, we can create all the programs we want to, and above and beyond the ones that Ms. Hahn already mentioned, we have, but let me tell you, the money's gotta come we have. But let me tell you, the money's gotta come from somewhere. And right now, we can barely afford to fix our water and sewer lines, as we'll soon discuss. So, there is no more money for incentives and programs above and beyond what we're already paying for. Absolutely. When I read this program, to me, this is not about charging fees, it's about doing everything we can to not charge fees. And there are untold options and programs that you can't document in an already four-page ordinance as it sits now. I mean, it'd be unreadable at that point if we had all the ways that this applies and doesn't apply. So, it's not realistic to put all the details in the ordinance. Suffice it to say, if you're doing anything with a property, essentially, you don't have to register. This is narrowly tailored for a very specific situation, none of which were really presented as examples here tonight. So, I guess I am frustrated, and I don't understand my colleagues' concerns, because all of the things you guys have mentioned would not warrant a registration fee. So, here we are. We're looking for better tools, and the staff has presented them for the specific situations where there isn't a renovation of the property, the property isn't up for sale or for rent, there isn't somebody who's going over there mowing it. Furthermore, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, if nobody reports the property is vacant, you guys are probably not gonna go looking for it. So, the quiet house on the corner that's quote-unquote mothballed, but has somebody coming over and mowing the lawn and trimming the hedge, wouldn't probably even be reported and therefore wouldn't be required to register. Am I not correct on that?
I would agree that we would definitely be looking for the low-hanging fruit.
So, most of the time, the house that's taken care of is probably not even gonna be flagged for this. So, I guess I don't understand why we cannot at least advance the ball, because the stuff we have that we're falling back to is not covering this problem, it's not solving this issue. So, voting this down is a huge step back, because now nothing will happen, it'll be the status quo, and our community will sit here and continue to languish. Thank you.
Councilman Lesser, to be followed by Councilwoman Hiller.
The only thing that I would further like to point out, a couple of things, is, you know, multiple calls that I received that, then I end up working with Mike, and I can't tell you how many of those would fit into exactly what we're talking about. And, you know, Mike is so good at what he does and his professionalism with people where at some point, we're just stuck to a point where all he's gotta, can do is apologize, you know. And, like I said, we got four of them now that we're working on that fit exactly into this. And so, you know, it's not a perfect tool, as Brendan said. But I think it is a tool that is a good start, that we can move, you know, move forward and tweak as we need to if there's changes that need to be done. And, you know, the point of, you know, it's gonna stop people from investing and buying and stuff like that because of the 200, what, $500. If you're running your margin that close, you probably ought to not be buying them anyway. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller, to be followed by Councilman Padilla.
Two points. One is that what we are voting on is what this says in writing, not what was just discussed today, which is not in the ordinance. And we have to have read it. And I'm talking about what I've seen because I read it. And what it says is that a registrable, property is any real property located in the city, vacant or occupied, that meets any of the following conditions. And then, there's a series of four that talk about foreclosures, which, as Ms. Freeze pointed out, needs a little tweaking. And B, any property that is vacant for more than 180 days. Period. That's what's supposed to be reported and dealt with in this. And so, there aren't any exceptions. And if we're cherry picking and so on, then we should say something different in the ordinance, I would argue, because we end up with that. I hear what Councilman Lesser is saying, there is a difference in neighborhoods that we have amongst our districts, and I think we need to listen to each other on that, in that, you know, a vacant house is an exception in some of the council districts that are represented here. In other districts, they're common. And so, the status of the ownership of those properties really varies. It's important to get them bought up as soon as possible. Sometimes people get an opportunity to buy them at the tax sale or some other way that there's a transaction, and you can only do them one at a time, or whatever. That kind of thing happens. If they're going to be, there is an exception for renovation activities underway, but there's no exception for it being for sale for any amount of time. That's not mentioned at all, and Ms. Hahn mentioned that it's not in there. If we're gonna start making judgment calls about maintenance of effort or said story or whatever, where do we stop?
Councilman Padilla.
There's been an awful lot of discussion, and I think good points made by both supporters and those who are not supporting this. I get a lot of emails asking the city council, or asking me, why the city council doesn't do something to improve how our city looks. Beyond the roads only, they talk about the neighborhoods and how they have to live next to these vacant properties that invite illegal activity, are probably unsafe for the neighborhood children, are places for hangouts for people who just wanna cause trouble in their neighborhood. And I've listened to what I think was a reasonable argument that, you know, we have to have time to rehabilitate these houses so that people can have, own them and live in them. But a reasonable amount of time is, I think, what we're trying to accomplish here. And I know that, as Councilwoman Hiller says, where do we stop? I think we stop when it stops making sense. I think we have to give credit to our department and our staff that this isn't gonna be something that they will sway about haphazardly as their responsibility to take these properties into the registry. And whether or not they can find ways to avoid these fees, because it's been proven to me in my time on the council, that Ms. Hahn and Mike, Mr. Haugen, who worked there, they work with the community as much as they can. They really give them every opportunity, to the point that some people take advantage of their ability to work with your department. And there has to be a stopping point. And I think it's important for us to think that it's not, people aren't leaving Topeka because of these houses. They aren't walking, leaving Topeka because of that. There are a lot of other things that contribute to that. And we have to take care of those things that we have the ability to. And I, too, like Councilwoman Claire says, we give our staff a charge, ask them to bring something to us, and then take more time in tearing it apart than we do and compliment any of them on the work that they've done. So, I appreciate the work that your staff and department has done. Same for you, City Manager, I know what we're trying to do. I don't think that taking a step forward prohibits us from readjusting and looking at what we are doing in the future. And it should become very clear, very quickly, in my opinion, of whether or not we've made the right step. And we can correct those steps if it was the wrong one. So, I will support it. Thank you.
Councilman Lesser.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second? Councilman Padilla, seconds. Additional comments or questions prior to the vote? This is a home rule, and the mayor cannot vote on this item. No further questions or comments, we proceed by voting.
We have six yes, with Councilmembers Hiller, Ortiz, and Emerson voting no.
The motion passes. At this point in time, it is eight o'clock, and it is the customary take-a-break time. So, we will recess for around five minutes, more or less, and we will reconvene soon after that.